This board meeting of the Board of Education for April 7, 2020 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being audio streamed live on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. This meeting is also being audio streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's board meeting will be streamed live with board members and staff attending by phone. General public comment and comment on items requiring a board action have been submitted to the board by email. I'd like to remind board members, please, and staff to state your first and last name so that we know who is speaking. I also wanted to note for everyone that we are looking at new ways to stream our meetings in video as well as audio. So hopefully we'll have a little bit of an improved platform by the next time we meet. At this time, the board will vote on its business agenda. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull for discussion? We can set those aside and discuss at the end of the meeting.
Yes, this is Julia Brim Edwards. I have questions about one of the contracts in 6087 and then also a question about item number 6090.
6087 and 6090?
Yes. And just so staff at the end of the meeting know which one of the contracts. I sent Mr. Quayar a query about Campus Connect of Oregon. So that's the contract.
Okay, so do you want to pull those or do you just want to discuss at the end of the meeting?
I'd like to pull them.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to adopt the rest of the business agenda?
So moved. Director Brim Edwards.
Director Brim Edwards moves and?
Second.
Seconds.
Director Scott and Lowry second adoption of the business agenda minus 6087 and 6090. Is there any board? We'll save our board discussion to the end. The board will now vote on resolutions 6087 through 6091 with the exceptions just noted. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. Sorry, I didn't call on the business agenda. I think we're missing Director DePass and Director Bailey.
No, I said yes.
Okay.
Director Bailey.
Are there any abstentions? Okay, any opposition? Business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Maxine. We'll do an individual roll call for other matters to be voted on. Sorry about that. Superintendent, welcome. Would you like to provide us your report?
Yes, thank you Chair Konstant. Good evening, directors and Buenos Aires public. Well, staff has been rather busy all around the district continuing to work with much our school leaders, our teachers, support staff, all continuing to work hard at supporting our students, connecting with them, being prepared to really embark on more robust continuous learning during this extended learning program. We appreciated the opportunity for staff to more fully brief the board this past third evening. I wanted to offer a little bit of a quick summary of that activity that we've been busy implementing during this health crisis. Our schools are on extended closure for our public's benefit, in particular, our parents and our students. Well, our big theme of the week is you've heard of TV and HD. This is PPS in HD. So PPSD is a distance learning program, home-based distance learning, thus the HD, intended to support students' academic and social emotional needs while our campuses remain closed due to COVID-19 precautions. Our home-based distance learning program aligns with guidance received to date from the Oregon Department of Education. It's providing blended learning opportunities for our students as well as access to educational materials through other means, which includes not just virtual classroom but also paper learning materials as well. The PPS HD plan includes curriculum by grade level and subject matter. It's designed to attempt to maintain instruction and academic engagement for our students. And as we begin transitioning to distance learning, we're going to be centered first on checking in with our students. It's very important to us that we reestablish our sense of classroom communities as we commence a plan for community of learn. So even the HD program is sort of right now. I really want to share a big shout out to all of our educators. They've been very willing to focus on their own learning. That includes what might be new technology platforms, really engaged on how to use them creatively to cover content, which has started. So we're connecting and engaging with students already. I shared last Thursday and I'll say it again, a special thank you to Portland Association of Teachers for their collaboration on helping to draft guidance for our teachers. I shared last week that moving all instruction in the district to online, basically overnight, I mean, it's been about seven to 10 days, it's a formidable task. Public education has had a model that really hasn't changed a whole lot since its inception. So we're trying something different, something new in many cases. If our teachers and students were using technology tools, but this is another level. So that there are device and internet access challenges that we're remaining committed to addressing. And we've made a lot of progress in just the last week. And I want to invite our community, students and parents to learn a little bit more about the details to visit our website, pps.net backslash HD. So we're also simultaneously still focused on the essential needs of our students. Since this closure began, as we all do here in PPS, it's been a team effort. I think during the livestream, we're throwing up some visuals. But what you see there are a few pictures to give you a little bit of a sense. Our nutrition services have done a fantastic task of standing up 15 nutrition hubs across Portland, making sure our students who need want a nutritious meal can access them. We're now at over 91,000 meals served. So thank you to our dedicated nutrition workers and our school custodians for their support. We'll continue providing meals Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can visit our website to find a location near you. Speaking of our custodial staff, they've remained busy during this closure, staying true to the goal of sanitizing and cleaning every one of our campuses. A few things, as an organization and one of the larger employers in the state, we've also, we keep materials on hand and that includes gathering up and donating over 2,400 protective N95 masks. We've turned those over to Moloma County to distribute as they're needed with health providers. There's also been donations that have been augmented by local PTA. So thank you, everyone, for doing your part to keep our first responders safe. And shared previously, channeling educator essentials and spirit of innovation, we had a couple of our Roosevelt High educators who were given permission to retrieve the school's 3D printer. They've been making face shields for frontline healthcare workers. So really want to give them a shout out as well. And per request, we opened up one of our elementary school sites. We're partnered with a childcare provider there so that children and healthcare workers are taken care of as they go about the heroic work of saving lives. So thank you to folks who are making sure the site at Riki is equipped and prepared. It's a good time for me to plug again how our business and philanthropic community has responded in a big way, knowing that many of our families' lives in particular have been uprooted through a partnership with our nonprofit fundraising organization, the Fund for PPS. Lyft and DoorDash are two examples. They're currently providing rides for families so that they can go to the grocery store or if they need to have a doctor's visit. They're delivering meals or arranging for tech devices to be delivered or learning materials, particularly for students we've identified who may have compromised immune systems or don't have the physical mobility to go to one of our nutrition hubs. We have local businesses who have chipped in. We have restaurants even during this tough financial local situation who are also stepping up and providing free meals or to-go for our families. So we want to give them a thank you too and thank you for that growing list. The Fund for PPS has established a coronavirus relief fund, a response fund for families who need these kinds of financial support during ISIS. We welcome anyone who wants to help out to visit the Fund for PPS's coronavirus relief fund site. You can also text GIVE to 844-334-1540 to help our coronavirus relief fund. Rest assured, every dollar goes to help our students and families. Internet access, it's especially critical at this time. The fund, in addition to our own information technology office, is working hard at providing free Wi-Fi to families who identify as needing that access. There is a big digital divide here, directors, and so to close it in a matter of weeks is a daunting task. It's something that all districts around the country are frankly struggling with right now. But I know that hundreds of hotspots are well on their way to be delivered. And just gathering and retrieving tech device cells for any student who needs a laptop at home and making sure they get one. We've distributed over 4,000 laptops so far. The need is still greater. We're going to continue gathering and distributing those and we expect several thousand more to go out in all due haste. So these are definitely unprecedented times, but I'm proud of the collective team effort that's underway, especially by our teachers, counselors, principals, nutrition workers, central office staff and senior leadership. I mentioned previously that there's still some unresolved questions and I want to call that out, particularly for our high schoolers. We're awaiting final direction from the Oregon Department of Education. I was on a call earlier. It sounds like that direction may come tomorrow perhaps regarding revised graduation requirements. This is a big outstanding question for us right now. We want to make sure that we're able to work with each of our seniors to get the appropriate counseling and identify work plans where necessary with teachers. So stay tuned for, our families and students should stay tuned for more details on that as soon as we have that guidance to the district. So, well, speaking of high school, I think our Board of Education knows that we have a couple of high-profile comprehensive high school leadership openings, and we did. We have one less. It's my pleasure, I'm very proud to announce, Mr. James McGee is going to be our next principal at Grant High School. Kudos to him, we're very proud of him. James is going to be succeeding Carol Campbell, who, as you know, is retiring after seven years at Grant, almost four decades in serving in Portland Public Schools. Her leadership has been instrumental, particularly as Grant was modernized and relocated and back again to their new campus this year. We're extremely grateful for Carol's service and congratulate her on her stellar career. So James, if I could just say a minute about this, and I know the school community has just heard the news this afternoon. He currently serves as a vice principal at Lincoln High School, where he started as a school counselor in 2014. I think some of the characteristics that stand out for James, if I can just take a little personal privilege here to share, is just the way he connects with students, the way he prioritizes this, in particular, some of the ways that he's demonstrated this. Black Student Union, created the school's Brothers of Color affinity group. He leads the Avid and he's known for closely collaborating with teachers and community partners to make sure every student is full potential. So I know Principal Peyton Chapman shares her endorsement and certain James has played an important part of that team's rise in graduation rates, particularly for students of color, where 100% of African-American students graduated. So we welcome James, more than 20 years of experience working with students, in particular at-risk students, as he becomes a general this coming fall. And so we're very excited to name our newest high school principal. So stay tuned for more leadership appointments. We have another one, I believe, coming tomorrow and a few others that are in process now with a couple of other school communities. So we'll let you know as those come to fruition. So I'll end by saying, I think one of the best things about this week is how school staff is beginning to reconnect with our students, even if that's virtually, in some cases in a car parade. But I think board members have seen some of the videos that even school faculties have constructed and put together and shared with students and families. They really sort of exemplify some of the efforts that our teachers are putting in to sort of reestablishing that connection, even if it's a hello, we miss you, it's a song, it's a bilingual message, all of those efforts help to lift school spirit. So these video clips have been really fun to watch, keep them coming. Thank you and thank you, directors, for sharing those with your constituents. We appreciate our teachers and school leaders for making sure that that focus on reestablishing a positive sense of school community is the first thing that they attend to. So that concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much and we look forward to hearing more about how things are going for our students in their virtual classrooms. Heard a lot of really positive comments from district staff last week who were invigorated by the challenge. All right, moving on to some more.
Director Konstant, just had a question for the superintendent. This is Director Brim Edwards. Superintendent Guerrero, last, first of all, thanks to you and all the staff for everything you've done sort of on a hurry-up offense to get our distance learning program stood up. Last week, yes, that's right, every day blends in together when you work from home. Last week when we had our special meeting, when there was a presentation about wireless access and the, I think the number that we're given, the concern that of students not having wireless access was 30%. And so I'm really appreciative that there's efforts to get mobile hotspots and the Wi-Fi package through Comcast. My question I would have is, I guess it has a couple of different parts. One, is that the sort of, is that our current thinking about the size? Like from last week to this week, I know things are evolving rapidly, last week to this week, that that 30% is the number of students who aren't going to have some sort of digital access? And then the second is, if it's Wi-Fi, what's the percent that don't have, that still need Wi-Fi? And then the third piece would be, I know Jonathan Garcia is doing great work with the fund, but I'm wondering if it, just given the short period of time, it might be more efficient for there to be a district budget allocation to pay for that versus trying to fundraise it and then having a gap? So it's a three-part question.
I'll attempt an initial response and then I'm going to invite our CTO, Don Wolf, to chime in. And I know you're talking some exact numbers, but what I'll share just thematically, whether it's my peers in the bigger cities in Oregon or on the east side or more rural locations, or as I've talked over the last couple of weeks with colleagues and other fellow CTOs around the country, this crisis, and I've said this publicly, continues to amplify a pre-existing digital divide. So we're doing our best to secure hundreds of hotspots and we're literally prepaying subscriptions so that they can get internet connectivity. I don't know if that's a systemic solution. I think that's our attempt to bring access to our students and families. I think this is a bigger conversation I would love to see our city and state leaders engage in. Cities and counties around the country that have, I think, doing a little bit more effective job at placing super hotspots or antennas in parts of town they've known all along have not had connectivity. I would love to see an effort by telecommunications or internet providers working with our city, county and state leaders, even if it's temporary during this extended closure. We have serious equity issues here. So you know, you have districts all around the country all ordering devices, whether they're hotspots or laptops, and you can imagine there's a growing backlog. We've also encouraged neighbors, if you're willing to, sort of open up your network, you know, for student use. And that helps maybe the immediate residences or apartments around you. But what we really need is sort of those super hotspots or those antennas. Don, I'm going to invite you to speak a little bit more to this because he's been at the epicenter, running around, trying to figure out creatively solutions along, partnered with our philanthropic efforts with Jonathan Garcia, but CTO Wolf?
So this is CTO Wolf, I'm here and I heard the question. So I want to answer and maybe give a little bit of specific information. Yes, we're seeing what we anticipate, the digital divide, about 12,000 to 15,000 students not having access to a device at home. That number looks to be holding true. The second point is, on the information we have collected at this time, we have 3,000 or so requests in for help with bandwidth. So along with the philanthropic effort that we're partnering with Comcast and through Chief Garcia to stand up that piece, we've been scrambling to try and find hotspots. When we spoke last week, one of the difficulties has been finding suppliers that still have them. Through that work over the past week, we got a lead last night that there was a large school district that had been double shipped hotspots and they had 2,000 to 3,000 available. We've been reaching out to them today and we're reaching out to confirm and put a hold on an additional 2,000 hotspots that we can use for our students. What it looks like from the data that we've collected and coming in is that we will be able to have enough to be able to quickly turn it around. We won't have those this week. We're hoping to get them as soon as next week and figure out how we start turning those back around. So as information comes out about the device distribution continuing, starting up again tomorrow, starting focused on our high school students and then our, everybody else, high grades K-12, Thursday and Friday and all through next week, we'll be putting a plan together on how we get those hotspots out to those families, those students who need them.
So I would already add that superintendents around the state had a chance to dialogue with Senator Merkley today. Both he and ODE's information office as well talked about how the CARES federal stimulus creates flexibilities to support locales or K-12 school districts with establishing connectivity or provisioning of technology devices to students. So this is where our directors could be really helpful at this time in some of that policy work to secure some of those resources out to local school districts. So we're open to any and all ideas. This is a popular theme right now and challenge that districts around the country are struggling with. And you've seen some regions be more successful than others. And where that's the case, you do see that local county, state and provider collaboration during this time. So I would love to partner at finding some solutions that are much more ubiquitous than the Singleton hotspot and laptop, which we're going to stay committed to. But we would love to see both E-rate or stimulus flexibilities built into a long-term plan here because for me, it isn't just about the crisis. If we're recognizing that technology can be an important backbone to support student learning, you know, especially outside of the school building, how do we make sure that that's available to our students?
One other item, one other item is that the U.S. Department of Education has announced that we're allowed to use our federal funding that we've already received this year, especially when we might have had some set aside for professional development that we won't be able to use this year. We're able to use that for that very purchase that Don Wolf was just, our CTO was just talking about. So we do have a budget line item, Director Brim Edwards, in order to support this very, very expense.
I have a quick question. How are we identifying the students that don't have access to the internet? If they don't have the internet, are we recruiting at the food sites or sending out the auto dialer? How are we able to get to those families that don't have internet access now to let them know that there may be a resource in the future?
Don or Jonathan, do you want to talk about some of our efforts today to survey?
I'll jump in and start, this is Don again. Along with the online form, we have been providing the signup sheets and the requests for information at the food sites as well as using our communities, our community outreach, outreach partners, our res J partners, our CDOs to be reaching out to families. And we've gotten a huge support from our building administrators and people in the buildings reaching out to their communities to collect that information and provide that back to us. So we are trying to get the word out that we need as much information as we can to identify who these students are so far as to have folks from our athletic departments are chiming in. Here's how we can help reach out to our community and our family members. We know families who are in need, let us help make some of those calls. And they have been great about stepping up and making sure no student gets left behind in these efforts.
That's fantastic.
I think as our teachers start to make phone calls, they're sort of beginning to ask these questions, whether they have connectivity and so our principals are able to feed that information to us. And then Don just mentioned, we have a lot of our community-based or culture-specific organizations that are checking in with families and they're either supplying them also and we're also sort of closing the loop on them letting us know who their learning needs a device or access as well.
That's fantastic. It's a huge effort. I really appreciate everything you've done to get those, so far, 3,800, 3,000 computers out the door.
Quick question about that. Did we prioritize older students over younger students just in terms of who got devices first?
This is Don again. Yes, yes, we did. Our first round of distribution at all nine sites was targeted at grades 412. We, starting tomorrow, we will have another high school-focused only pickup site as well as we did last Friday. Or yeah, I would believe it's last Friday, we had a high school only pickup and we've changed the rules a little bit to make it easier. When we open those up, we're not, we're just ensuring that students can come up with a student ID or their student ID number to get those. So if they have families at home, that a parent can't take them to the collection site or if they can get their, and we're allowing some of our community-based organizations and our partners to come in and help get those devices for students who aren't able to make that. So there have been a couple targeted collections for only high school students. We will continue to make sure that that is one of our primary targets to make, to get devices to.
Okay, great, thanks. I had heard indirectly from a parent of a second grader wondering who was on the list, wondering if and when they would get a device. So it's just good to be clear that we have, we're going through a priority situation.
All right, thank you, Superintendent, and thank you to this whole team for just the continued incredible efforts on behalf of our students. All right, we will move on to some of our board policy work. Tonight, we have a second reading of a policy on district funds for purchase of gifts, meals and refreshments. Vice Chair Moore, could you please introduce this item that's? Um, Vice Chair Moore, could you please introduce this item that's coming to us from your Board Policy and Governance Committee?
Uh, thanks. Um, this is a policy that was um, substantially revised um, to respond to a finding in the Secretary of State's audit from last year. Um, the proposed policy was presented for first reading on February 4th, 2020. Um, subsequent to that, the uh, Policy Committee did um, I looked at it at, at three other meetings and made uh, some additional changes. So we did a second first reading on March 9th. It's been out for public comment since then. And uh, we have received no public comment. Um, and we're proposing it tonight with a unanimous, the committee's unanimous recommendation for passage by the full board. That's it.
Sorry about that. Um, all right, the board will now vote on Resolution Number 6092 to adopt the revised District Funds for Purchase of Meals, Refreshments and Gifts Policy, 8.30.010P. Do I have a motion?
So moved. This is Scott.
Director Bailey moves, and Director Lowry seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 6092. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 6092?
No.
Okay, any uh, board discussion?
Yes, I have some questions.
This is Director Lowry.
Oh, and? Go ahead, Director Lowry.
Uh, this is Director Lowry, and I just wanted to commend Director Brim Edwards and Director Moore for all of their hard work on this policy. Um, Director Brim Edwards has spent a lot of time wanting to make sure that our school district is in alignment with the Secretary of State's audit and that this was one area where there were a lot of um, places and connections. And I know that uh, Liz Large and her staff has worked really hard, and Cynthia Lee and her staff, to make sure our practices are in compliance with the spirit of the Secretary of State's audit. And now um, this policy will help us sort of be uh, within the law. And so it took a lot of time and energy for staff and for the policy team. Um, and I'm very appreciative of all the work that people poured in so that we can um, live up to the ethical standards we all want for PPS.
Director Brim Edwards, did you have something you wanted to add?
So I had um, some, a couple of questions um, that I had sent before, and I don't know if um, that, there were two individuals with their names on the staff report, Emily Courtney and Cynthia Lee. So I don't know if I should be asking the questions to somebody else or if they're available on the line.
So Liz Large and Claire Hertz will respond to your questions.
Okay, um. So and these are, these are similar questions that I asked in, sorry. I've got too many devices. Bless you, bless you. Um, so the question I have is this is, um, this is a response to the audit from the Secretary of State. And there was um, quite a bit of discussion, as Director Lowry mentioned, within the committee regarding um, some of the specificity and sort of the specificity that is not in the policy but in the CFO guidance. And the question I would have, and the CFO guidance apparently has a lot of the very specific detail, the specific details, or even just some even broader, higher level guidance. Um, so my question is, um, when will the A, A, Administrative Directive for this be posted? Since we have, there's six times in the policy that um, reference the Administrative Directive, and there's not a link to it?
As soon as the, this is Claire Hertz. As soon as the um, policy is approved by the board, then the updated Administrative Directive will be posted on the website.
So it's, so it's available now?
It, it has not been approved yet by the superintendent, but the draft has been prepared in conformance with the anticipated policy changes. So I can't on behalf of the superintendent and his timeline, uh, but I, my prediction is that it will not be very long at all.
And is the language in the draft Administrative Directive the same as the CFO guidance?
It is uh, it is not an exact, but it's in guidance.
I'm sorry, Liz, you, you cut, you cut out.
Sorry, uh, not a cut and paste of the CFO guidance that's currently part of current directions to employees uh, and those who administer reimbursements and P-carders. But it, it is the substance of that put into the form of an administrative directive.
So there's like, not, not material changes, but uh, potentially obviously formatting and non-material?
I think they are non-material. I think that through the Policy Committee work, there were a couple of um, minor adjustments that came. I think even when we distributed the draft AD in the committee conversation, some of those were apparent where there were slight tweaks to the existing CFO guidance. But it is very much informed by uh, the, the policy language that the Policy Committee has put before the board uh, tonight and the current CFO practice um, that exists.
And then a question about the, uh, who the policy, so I'm not surprised we didn't have any comments. I mean, we're in the middle of a pandem, pandemic and um, an impending reset, potential recession. Um, I'm wondering who we circulated it to and do we send, did we circulate it along with the Administrative, Draft Administrative Directive?
Uh, this is Liz Large again. Um, the, the standard process is not to circulate draft policies. We post them on um, the Policy Committee page. We give notice to our labor partners of those, of the meetings that are happening and the agendas. As I understand it, Roseanne Powell can, oversees that notice, can lean in and uh, to the mic and tell me if I've misstated that, but that's my understanding. Um, the AD, because it is in draft and not uh, in final, is not posted. We generally don't post draft ADs, so that, the usual process is what was executed here.
Right.
That is, that's correct, Liz.
I'm, I'm sorry, what, was, was that Roseanne?
Yeah, yes, this is Roseanne. Yes, I was just confirming that that was the process that we followed.
Okay. And then um, it just, the reason I'm focused on the AD is, as I say, I think unlike um, there's a, there's a fair number of, I think, things that the Secretary of State's office called out, um, where there needed to be, they, they reference the fact that our policy, um, like the 20, the 2005 policy um, needed strengthening or more controls, a more specific direction. And it seems like in this particular case, that is in the AD, which um, the, the draft AD I saw, to me meets a lot of the standards. Unfortunately, we didn't put it in the policy. I have another question, which is why I'm asking the question about the AD.
This is Director Scott. Can I, can I just ask a clarifying question, Director Brim Edwards? Um, I, I, I mean, you're, you're asking a lot about the AD. I, I just want to be clear about process. We're approving the policy tonight from a board perspective. The AD is something the superintendent gets to do, and, and it has to be consistent with the policy that we're approving, if I'm understanding the process correctly, right?
Well, I, yes, I understand. Thank, thank you for the question. Yes, I understand that as, as a policy, um, what our, our role is and what the role of the superintendent is and the AD. It's just, there's a lot of details that reference and the informations in the AD. So if you, if you were looking to like, is this a reasonable standard? And you read this, you wouldn't necessarily know it, have an answer to that unless you saw the AD, which, so it's not specific.
Yeah, I guess.
Which is one of the criticisms, if we're doing this to respond to the Secretary of State's audit, that seems to be a place that um, we haven't gotten a sharp point on.
Yeah, I guess I would just, I, I think it's important for us as a board to focus on the policy and whether there are any issues with the policy before us. Um, and it really is the superintendent's job then to, to write an AD consistent with the policy and then consistent with the findings from the audit. I just want to make sure we don't blur those lines.
I, I absolutely clear on the lines. Um, I also want to, I also want to make sure that we are responsive to the, the audit findings.
Can I, uh, can I jump in here? Um, you raised these questions um, numerous times, uh, over numerous meetings of the Policy Committee. And um, after about four months' worth of discussions, and then um, it, that happened prior to the original first reading and then three more committee meetings following that. Um, we made some changes. Um, and we, we determined as a committee that um, this level of detail was appropriate for the policy, leaving the details to the Administrative Directive.
I think I was clear in the, only speaking for myself, that I felt either more details needed to be in the policy or the AD needed to accompany it so people could see the entire package of what was being proposed.
And Director.
And we, and we had, we had a difference of opinion, and it's just, I think, we did that. I'm, I'm concerned we're not going to meet the standard of what we needed to have in the policy.
And this is Director Lowry, Director Brim Edwards. I felt like one of the huge pieces that we, we heard from staff again and again um, was that in practice, we have already met all of the standards that were lifted up in the Secretary of State's audit, that, that we have already made all the changes that met um, what was requested of us. And this is codifying that into policy. Um, and so that was one of the reasons for me that that level of detail showing up in the AD was sufficient because, you know, as Ms. Large and um, Ms. Lee shared with us repeatedly, those practices that were questioned have been modified.
As I say, I think that I have a different, just a different point of, thank you, Director Lowry. Um, I just have a different point of view of something based on what they, the audit said of what we needed to have in policy or at least circulated with the policy so everybody could see the standard. So the other issue that I would like to raise and, and Director Moore, I, I did raise this issue in committee and we did discuss it several times, but um, we're getting ready to vote on it. So I want to um, just raise it um, as well regarding the um, meals and refreshment section and the limits on expenditures that uh, the language we currently have is that it's reasonable based on facts and circumstances and not lavish or extravagant. And um, I raised in the committee and I, again, maybe duplicative for those who are on the committee, but I'm gonna raise it before we vote on it, that I think that is somewhat subjective. And um, would like as just part of the public record to have um, an explanation of who, what, what are the, what are the facts? And I guess maybe this is something, would be something in the AD, and I don't know because this was one of the last discussions we have, whether this has been modified. But um, in terms of the facts and circumstances, um, who is the, who, who would determine whether they're reasonable in a real expenditure? So say um, a central office staff person takes a community member or business person to lunch, pays the bill. It, what, who would make the determination of reasonableness? And what are the facts and circumstances that might be considered?
So the supervisor of the employee would um, approve the expense. And there is a um, a standard that we use that is reasonable cost is a price that is consistent with what a reasonable person would pay in the same or similar circumstances for the same or similar item. So that's how we determine what is reasonable, is what others would do. Is it reasonable, is it a reasonableness amongst um, um, others? Would others consider it reasonable? And so um, the supervisor is the one that's reviewing it, as well as we have, for instance, if it's on the P-card. Um, we also have um, our staff in the procurement and contracting services department that also review every P-card purchase for reasonableness. And again, this is Claire Hertz speaking.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to, um, for those in the listening audience, um, I think it's worth um, giving a little background here. Um, Director Brim Edwards, uh, during multiple committee meetings, um, strongly suggested that we put in the policy a provision that would establish um, a definition of reasonableness, um, principally in terms of adopting the um, General Services Administration per DM rates. Um, these are the rates established by the federal government for um, uh, for breakfast, lunch and dinner in different locations across the country. Um, we spent a great deal of time discussing this during the committee meetings. Um, and the message that we heard consistently from staff was that putting that kind of um, that kind of limitation in the policy, rather than establishing, you know, something similar in the Administrative Directive, putting it in the policy would create um, a potential, a, a great potential for um, a substantial amount of time being spent by supervisors in policing and uh, policing relatively small expenditures and um, requiring that uh, employees who may have gone, you know, a dollar or two over the limit, they would have to reimburse the district. And um, the, the message we heard consistently from staff was that this would be sort of penny wise and pound foolish. We would be spending an inordinate amount of time in administrative policing of this policy. Um, and that um, the Administrative Directive uh, which actually reflects current practices, um, adequately provides um, supervision and accountability for employee expenditures. So this was discussed at, at great length in the committee. Um, and the, the committee voted two to one um, not to accept that and to uh, instead have the current language that you cited.
Right. Is there, is, is there any concern that if someone was to breach the policy? I mean, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet the standard? Is there any concern that it's a little bit subjective and it, it might not pass a sniff test?
Well, let me give an example that I used in, in one of the committee, actually several of the committee meetings. Um, just prior to going to one of the meetings, um, I had to, um, I ate lunch out. I got a sandwich. It was a thoroughly uninspiring sandwich. It cost me $17, which exceeded the GSA limits. I, I was, I had this sandwich at a cafe, and normally I would never spend that much on a sandwich, but I hadn't, I wasn't paying attention. And um, that's the kind of thing that can frequently happen. Um, it does not take much effort at all in Portland to exceed the GSA limits. They're, they're, they're very, very modest. And it is, it's very easy to go a dollar or two or even more um, over a GSA. over a GSA limit to get an extremely modest meal.
The thing is, those, those per diem rates vary by, by jurisdiction though. So where, where there's a higher cost of living, generally the per diem is a little bit higher to accommodate.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Portland.
It's $17 in Portland.
Okay, well, I don't know because I don't travel to Portland, so I don't know what the per diem is for it.
Chair Konstant, this is Director, Director Scott. Can I make a motion to move forward with a vote on this policy?
Second.
It's, it's already been moved.
Yeah.
Has it? Oh, I forgot. It had been a while.
Can we call the question?
So I'm, I'm just going to close by saying that I'm not going to be supportive of the policy because I think it needs more definition. And I think when we have a review from the Secretary of State's Audit Division, that they'll find that we haven't put in place in the policy the necessary controls. And we don't actually have any control over the AD because, as Director Scott noted, it is not the prerogative of the, of the board. So I, I hope that it's speedily posted and that will reviewed and posted by the superintendent so that we are prepared when the Secretary of State's office comes back and asks us about the policy. Because I think that's probably the best remedy to get it posted as soon as possible.
Deputy Superintendent Hertz, would you like to make one last comment regarding the alignment of the policy to, specifically to the guidelines that were being addressed from the Secretary of State's audit?
And Chair Konstant, this is Director Lowry. I'd also like to make one more comment.
So as we rewrote the, as the CFO rewrote the guidelines for staff and as we drafted the Administrative Directive, we were keeping in mind the current state of the, you know, the updated policy from staff as well as we looked at the state of Oregon, Department of Administrative Services, who's actually where the Secretary of State gets their standards for these types of expenditures. And we looked to them for their practices and used a lot of language directly from that. So it would tie directly to what the Secretary of State's audit is also using.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Director Lowry?
And I would just say, given all the comments that the staff made during our policy meetings and the deep discussions we did on all of the ways to craft this language to both make sure that our staff are honoring what the Secretary of State found in the audit and making it workable so that we aren't wasting lots of supervisor time, that this really does, for me, address those concerns. And I think our behaviors have really shown in the changes we've made systemically that we're honoring what was found in that audit.
Thank you, Director Lowry. The board will now vote on Resolution 6092 will take a voice vote. Director Low, please indicate yes or no, Director Lowry.
Yes.
Director DePass?
Yes.
Director Moore?
Yes.
Director Brim Edwards?
No.
Director Scott?
Yes.
Director Bailey?
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes as well. Resolution 6092 is approved by a vote of six to one. Representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We will now recess the board from its regular meeting and convene as the Budget Committee. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to make any comments about the amendments to the 2019-20 budget?
Would you like the Deputy Superintendent of Business and Operations to share that information with the board?
Why don't you go to, go ahead, Deputy Superintendent Hertz?
I concede the superintendent speaking, but his phone is on mute. This is Jonathan Garcia. Chief of Community Engagement, it helps if the community can hear your voice, but Deputy Claire Hertz, you could attest to me on my understanding. I think I have it down, but I buy you the privilege. Please.
So this is an amendment to the 2019-20 budget. As you can imagine, there are unknowns in terms of our expenditures in, during this season of the COVID pandemic crisis. So we have updated our budget to include additional resources that were received this year and also looking at additional appropriation at the Instructional and Support Services area in the General Fund so that we can have capacity to spend additional resources just like the Wi-Fi hotspots that we were speaking about earlier this evening. There are, there are also some smaller amounts. There's some special revenue, additional grant fundings and moving around from different levels of appropriation from support, adding additional support services and enterprise and community services. As you know, we are also offering lots of meals to students as well. And then we have a small slight correction in our debt service fund. Just, there was a truncating, rather than a rounding up in our adopted budget, so we want to correct that. And that's, there was also some additional information at the Capital Projects Fund level with the different additional resources. And then, of course, the wanting to spend some grant funds and such that well, additional construction excise tax and different additional resources coming for capital projects. So those are the, that is the overall supplemental budget that we're asking for you to approve the resolution to appropriate by fund and appropriation level that's listed in, in the attachment B of the resolution.
Thank you very much. The board will now consider Resolution 6093, Amendment to the 2019 Budget for School District 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Director DePass moves and Director Scott seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 6093. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Is there any board discussion?
This, Director Scott, I have a couple of questions. And they're a little bit new, newbie questions because I haven't been through a budget process here yet with PPS. Direct, Deputy Superintendent Hertz, can you, the Capital Projects Fund, so that's a, I'm just reading that right. It's a $562 million increase in that fund. Is that right?
Well, and that one in particular, it's, we are issuing bonds. So that does also allow us to issue the bonds that's this addition, second half of the 2017 bond issue. And as a matter of fact, we are bringing forward a sale that will close in the middle of April. So that allows us to have the transaction closed in the middle of April, this month.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that was in fact the, the, the bond sale that was, that was driving that. And then in terms of, could you, could you just, again, this is a new, new person, new, new board member question. Could you walk me through the special revenue fund at a very high level, just 30 seconds, what, what that fund is?
There are many things in the 200 level, but most of it is federal and state grants. It also has our Nutrition Services Fund in it. So it is things that are restricted for specific purposes. So our title funding for low income mortgages and students, our IDEA funding for special education. And frequently we will have adjustments in those grants. And so we bring that forward to you. And it, but it has multiple, it has our, when our foundations donate to the district and it comes through that 200 fund so that the schools can make purchases. So there are many different circumstances for special revenue funds.
Yeah, okay, so, but everything in there has some sort of restriction, which is why it's a special revenue fund.
Correct.
Okay, it was larger than I would imagine. And then just from a process perspective, are we, are we doing the public hearing right now for the major supplemental budget? Or, or is that already done? It wasn't clear from the staff report.
It, it is being done right now. That's why we requested public comment on this item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. I, I thought that was the case, but I wasn't 100% sure. So, okay, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
So this is just a building, this is Julia, Director Brim Edwards, just building on that question. So I thought in the past, when we had had budget amendments, we actually had had a, the board meeting hearing separate from the, the actual vote on, on the the change in the budget. So I'm just curious, have these already been implemented? Because it looks, it looks like the way it's worded, that we're just ratifying some, a decision that was already, was already made. Is that correct?
No, it is not a decision that's being, has been made. We're asking you to approve this. This is what has been proposed by staff based on our review of our current financials and the upcoming, getting through the pandemic event and creating some capacity where we know that by the end of the year, we'll probably spend higher in some areas. So for instance, right now, when we talk about the Wi-Fi hotspots, that's an example. But right now we have the capacity to pay for that. But it, it, when we get through to the end of the year, we may run out of capacity and we have to have permission before we finish the year. So we're asking ahead of time, understanding that we are doing a massive, a massive lift in getting distance learning up for all of our students. So having addition, I know that we are making available additional instructional materials that we hadn't planned on, additional technology and just a whole series of things in order to implement that. So this is, it's not decisions that have been made in that we have not overspent our appropriation levels, but we anticipate by the end of the year that we, we, we might need additional. And it's hard to pinpoint right now all the specifics with executive orders coming out and, and giving us additional instructions. And we're, we just need to be ready to implement whatever we're asked to do. And the other piece is, we did put a public notice in terms of a legal notice in the Oregonian of this supplemental budget. So that has already been published prior to this board meeting.
Great. So just a follow-up, because that's great context about sort of changed environment driving sort of different expenditures that we wouldn't normally anticipate. So the staff report that says the analysis of the situation that has, should the board choose not to pass the resolution will in the year out of compliance with the Oregon local budget law? That would be because we haven't moved the funds? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand that.
You're making, by making appropriations, you're giving us permission to spend. And normally when you're adopting a budget, you make appropriations. What we know since June of last year, when this budget was adopted, there are changes that have transpired just in our daily operations as well as a national pandemic event. So we are anticipating a change in our spending patterns. And there, I think I mentioned one small correction in a debt service fund where it had been truncated instead of rounded up. And so we now have that etched in stone in the Budget Department so that we always round up and not truncate to make it a little bit smaller than it should be for debt service. So again, there, we haven't made that payment yet, so we have not overspent our appropriation. But we anticipate by the end of June that we will need that additional appropriation. And that's why we're asking that of the board tonight.
So it's the authorization for appropriations. Okay, got it. Thanks. Just the other question I have, and again, this is like we're in highly unusual times. But I'm, I'm wondering, just the same way, is we're having expenditures that we thought we, we didn't ever anticipate we would have because who would have anticipated we'd be in this situation? Are there things in which we anticipated spending resources that that we won't now have to expend those funds because of just changed environment? Like if there's, if there's no spring sports, which I hate to say, or no, you know, spring musicals or, you know, pick the, you know, no outdoor school. Are there things in which there'll be upside?
Of course.
The district?
Of course. It's just, it's so, such a recent event. And there's been significant shift in what we're doing on a daily basis that it's hard for us to measure that at this point. And, and an abundance of caution, we wanted to bring this forward to the board at this time so that we don't have that issue of overspending in appropriation level. And probably the main driving force is that we were looking at bond clail in the best possible circumstances, our historically low interest rates, right? Current, in the current bond market, while it's a tricky market to sell in, it is an excellent market in terms of your long-term interest rates. And that was something that we needed to have in place as well.
Great. That was really helpful. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any further questions?
I, I do have just one more sort of technical legal question. It might be more for, for Liz. Have we, have, have we looked at the legal issues around this qualifying as a public hearing virtually? I know this is an issue that is being discussed in the state. And the fact that under, and I apologize that I know that this is ORS 294, I'm not proud of that fact. But under ORS 294, in terms of how it defines a public hearing, this is actually something local governments are asking all over in terms of they go forward with the budget process. So did we talk to TSCC or Department of Revenue at all about, about making sure that this does qualify as a public hearing?
I have not broken with either of those agencies on that question. I don't know Claire, if any of your team has, but, but the legal department.
Chief Financial Officer Cynthia La did connect with the TSCC and they approved of this process. It was. Yeah.
Thank you. I know they are sort of, yeah, and as you mentioned, it was published in the Oregonian and noticed. And I know that is TSCC's recommendation. So I thank you for checking on that and I think we should move forward. And I hope we get some clarity from the governor of the legislature soon in terms of, of these processes.
All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6093. Again, will take a voice vote. So we'll begin. Director Lowry? Directors, please indicate by saying yes or no. Director Lowry?
Yes.
Director DePass?
Yes.
Director Moore?
Yes.
Director Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Director Scott?
Yes.
Director Bailey?
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes as well. Resolution 6093 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We will now adjourn the board as the Budget Committee and call the board back into its regular session. The next item is request to waive the cash management policy 8.20.010-P. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce the next item?
Well, as you all know, Director, this health crisis has spawned a second crisis, an economic one, which we have to be very attuned to. And so Claire Hertz, this evening, going to share, been watching why that's so with the critical sale right now. Claire?
So the current US Treasury's securities market is in an unusual circumstance. And it will actually cost us money if we were to invest there. So we're looking at other options to, we're asking the board to waive. If you look in our board policy, you'll see that an individual bank is limited to 10% of our total investment portfolio. And we're asking for a temporary wave of this section of the policy to allow us to go up to 25% per financial institution. As we, the money market accounts are best in terms of not costing. resources in order to invest funds, especially as we move to investing our bond proceeds from our sale that will close later this month. So, with that, I'm asking the board to approve the resolution in order to allow us to waive the Section 7, subsection 2 of Board Policy 8.20.10 for 120 days. So, there would be an end date of this waiving of the policy section.
Okay. We'll get this on the table. The board will now consider Resolution 6094 to waive the cash management policy 8.20.10. Do I have a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Second.
Director Bailey moves, and Director Brim Edwards second motion to adopt Resolution 6094. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on this resolution?
No.
Is there any board discussion? I have, I have a question, actually. I can tee it off. So, Deputy Superintendent Hertz, was there any consideration of establishing a relationship with another financial institution in order to respect the spirit of the policy while, you know, adhering to the common sense approach here?
Certainly, it was considered. But in this day and age, you have to have a wet signature on a bank card and getting those passed while we're all staying home and practicing social distancing. It seemed it would take longer for us to get that sent back and forth from the, through the individuals that need to sign it. And usually, it can take weeks to get it processed through the bank. So, it was considered. And with the sale happening in the middle of this month, we felt it would be better to waive the policy for 120 days in order to get that in place quickly.
So, just a follow-up question. What institution has the, has those funds?
Right now, we haven't, we haven't closed, so nobody has the funds. The buyer has the funds. So, we'll close in the middle of April. So.
Where, where, I'm sorry, where will the cash be held?
Oh, I'm sorry. They'll be going into our, our banks, and I'll have to get the list. There's three main banks that we use that are adopted by, you know, the, the board approves those institutions on an annual basis. But I can look that up for you.
And there's not any issue of us having, being over-indexed in a particular institution that wouldn't be covered in case of a financial collapse?
So, there is a collateral process by the state of Oregon that banks, you know, we have to, we can only bank with banks that are approved by the state of Oregon that have the capacity to have the collateralization for our funds.
Okay, through the state treasury?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then I have just one other question. And I think this is, this is a smart thing to do. On other public boards that I serve on, others are doing this as well, so I'm supportive of it. I just have a question about, we got the resolution and information yesterday. I just want to ensure that, while we didn't have it posted for 72 hours, that there could be, this is a question, there could be a real financial impact on PPS if we didn't approve this at this, at this board meeting?
That is correct. And my apologies for getting it to the board late.
But, but it's, it's urgent, so we should approve it.
Bring it forward tonight.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further?
Can I, I, I found the, the names of the banks, so I'll just add those in, in answer to Julia's question. JP Morgan Chase, Amqua, and Washington Federal, as well as Willamette Community Credit Union, which has a much smaller limit on how much, how much funds they can hold. That's it.
Any further discussion or questions? All right. The board will now vote on Resolution 6094. Again, we'll take a voice vote. Director Lowry?
Yes.
Director DePass? Director DePass? Director Moore?
Yes.
Director Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Director Bailey?
Yes.
Director Scott?
Yes.
Director DePass? All right. We may have lost Director DePass. I vote yes as well. Any objections? Oh, is that Director DePass?
Yes. Yes, Director DePass is mouthing yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. I couldn't get, I couldn't get down to my unmute button, but yes.
Okay. Resolution 6094 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Lateral voting?
Yes.
All right. Great. Thank you very much, Deputy Superintendent Hertz.
Thank you.
We have one conference report tonight. Director DePass, would you like to provide us with a report of your recent conference?
Sure. So, I attended in early March, which seems like years and years and years ago, a conference, a two-day conference in Nashville where we got to tour the academies of Nashville. And those are academies, are career technical focused academies. We visited Stratford School and McGavick. There's a lot of pride in both buildings. What was interesting about the visits were, there were multiple principals in one building with one chief, a chief in the building, and then four or different academy principals. The learning environment was really interesting to watch, just to compare how different it was from Portland. The students that toured us all had on Navy blazers and were very professional. The career technical learning was, criminal justice was one of the offerings. Legal, biomedical, the arts track had music, studio music, and digital media. STEAM focus was biomedical engineering and science and research. And they're in cooperation with Vanderbilt and other area universities. And it was really great to learn from the students. We had an opportunity to, so these academies are in the two different buildings. They're branded academies. And so, there's corporate support from Bridgestone, Bridgestone Tires, Nissan, Ford, and other recognizable corporate names that support the learning and the students with job shadows and, you know, other supports, financial in some cases. It was really interesting to watch a team meeting. We, they actually had a, performed a team meeting.
Hey, Michelle, your, your microphone's off.
Director DePass, which I'm?
It, I just, can you hear me now? I, anyway, really interesting to witness the team meeting. So, the teams are focused in this, in, in the focus areas. And so, they have a smaller group of students. They're able to track students, you know, by name in each academy, each of those learning areas. Graduation rates in both of those high schools that we visited went from, you know, the low 50s up and, up into the low 90s percentage-wise. I, I got there thinking like, who would want a branded academy? None of the corporations are able to put any, their logo on any of the materials. But it was interesting to see the, the support from the corporate community. And a, a great visit. And, and a great visit in that, you know, it might be a long time before I'm able to be in an airport again. So, it seems like a whole nother, a whole nother world ago.
Thank you very much. Glad you had an opportunity to, to do that. Lastly, so.
I was going to say, excuse me, one more thing, and that's that Benson, our own Benson Tech was, had, had great representation at that conference as well. So, I think it'd be interesting to hear from them what they picked up from the visit.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to get back to the two items that have been pulled from the business agenda. I believe it was 6087 and 6090. Director Brim Edwards, would you like to speak to your removal of those items from the business agenda?
Yeah, I just have question, I have questions about both of them. I'll just start with, which are pretty, pretty straightforward, just the question on settlement in 6090. And the resolution states that the resolution was reached pursuant to the direction of the district's insurance carrier. And I was wondering if General Counsel Large could speak to that piece, and then I just have a follow-up question.
Sure. I, I think it's best understood in context of the insurance contract and relationship we have with our carrier. We have a $500,000 self-insured retention. It's for most purposes, you can just think of it as a deductible. And so, as, and let me back up one more step. That, what that means is that the first $500,000 incurred on a claim, whether that's in payment of a settlement or a judgment or the defense costs, any amounts over $500,000 are paid by the carrier, and any amounts under that are paid by the district. So, as we were approaching that threshold, we are, as is best practice, in communication with our carrier. When there was an opportunity to settle this claim, wanted to eliminate the exposure, which was almost entirely theirs, were the case not to settle and go forward.
So, just as a follow-on, thank you, as a follow-on. So, is it accurate to say that, while it says it was at the direction of the district's insurance carrier, that our overarching approach with our insurance carrier is that we have shared fiduciary responsibilities and controls built in, and that any of the cases that were, have been under consideration, there is this sort of partnership or shared approach by us and our insurance carrier? Is that an accurate description?
I would state it differently. I would say it's, it's at its core, a contractual relationship that defines who has what responsibilities at what levels of liability and exposure. It is, it is very much a relationship that you want to be productive and collaborative. And I'm, I think I can very safely say that ours is with our carrier. And so, there are duties, the carrier has certain duties to the insured, as, as do your lawyers. And all of us working hard on managing these claims. So, it is, it is, in its foundation, a contractual relationship. But it is, it is one when you are assessing risk and making decisions, one that involves collaboration. And certainly, everyone is focused on the best interest of the insured, which is Portland Public Schools.
Great. Thank you.
Chair, I believe there was another question by Director Brim Edwards on 6087.
Yep. So, we could just do them both together, and then you can move the two items. So, the other question I had was about the contract, the campus compact. And it's for a relatively small amount, $68,000 in the, in the overall scheme of things. I'm just looking at the, the contract extension. It's for 15, from April 15th of 2020 to, I can't tell if it's my handwriting, March 31st, 2021. And what it generated for me is just the, the question about how we're going to approach contracts potentially between now and mid-fall next year. Because if I, if I look at, then I'm interested, curious about if, so for example, it starts, we're re-upping again on April 15th. If there's no school delivered at, at a school location, is the expectation that all, any, this contract, the contractual obligations would be delivered in a distant, distant learning format? And I guess that also, my question would be extending to next fall if we're not, if we're still in a distance learning posture. How, for this specific contract, but just generally, are we expecting contractors to sort of modify their posture? Or would it be, you know, make more economic sense to say, this isn't something we can layer on top of our current distance learning? So, I'm interested in sort of what our approach is going to be over the next six months.
Director Brim Edwards, are you asking specifically to campus compact the contract or just generally?
Well, I get specifically, and, and it generates a lot of questions because we have contracts that we routinely vote on that are extensions where there's a service that's delivered, not in the classroom, that's sort of supplemental or wraparound. And I think last check, we had, we had, we have a fair number of those contracts or something like this, where normally the service would be delivered at the, at the school. And just my question is, for this specific contract, are we expecting them to deliver services even if the students aren't back in the school buildings? And then generally, how are we going to approach that with other contracts as well?
Sure. So, I'll just say first off, as, as prudent administrators, we wouldn't permit the invoicing of goods and services not rendered. But on this specific contract, and there might be adjustments made, given the changing context. And that certainly is something we're discussing with providers and other contracts. On this one specifically, I will ask our CAO, Dr. Luis Valentino, and our deputy sue, Dr. Quair, if he wants to chime in about what this one looks like specifically.
Yes. And I'll tee it up, Director Brim Edwards, and I did respond to your email earlier. This contract is a contract that does reside in the College and Career Readiness Department within the OTL office. It is specific to our Gear Up Grant, which is, which is part of the 2008 grant that we were awarded, which is just purely focused on building the capacity of each of our schools to promote equitable access to post-secondary ed and training. This is specific to having two AmeriCorps members actually coming in and supporting our, our coaches and our mentors under the direction of a TOSA, which is within the Gear Up slash College and Career Readiness Department. And so, I just wanted to kind of give some background in terms of where this actually, where it resides in. But I'll let Dr. Valent, I'll let Dr. Valentino actually go into more of the details in terms of what does this actually consist of for the day-to-days.
Yeah. And actually, I don't have any issue, I'm, I'm familiar with this. I don't have, my question's not related to the actual services. It's just like, in, in this environment, are we expecting contractors to provide modified services? Or we're putting something in the contract that if they can't deliver services, that we have a taking? So, this is, it's more of a general question, not specifically related to, it's just, we'd like to see how it, for example, plays out in this contract. Like, are they going to meet with the high school, high school teams and the college and career teams, and then actually work distancely with, from a distance with students, or how that works?
So, just briefly with, for us in OTL, as you know, most of our contracts with partners have to do with delivery of professional development or direct supports to students. And so, so for example, the superintendent has been speaking with leadership at Labbit to see how it can be modified so that we can provide professional development online over the summer or apply a hybrid model that takes us into next fall. And looking at direct supports for students, some of them begin over the summer, which is why the contract is staggered the way it is, to begin in July and work through the summer and into the fall. And so, if for the summer we are not ready, then we have to rethink how we can apply all of the learning that we had, that, that we're going to have between now and summer to use technology to build in a, either a hybrid model or an online. to use technology to build in a, either a hybrid model or an online component where possible. In some cases, that, that is not possible, and we will have to revisit our contracts. And from my office, I've actually begun to look at a couple that I don't think we'll be able to carry forward. But in some cases, I think that we will be able to do that.
And this is, this is a case because of it's backloaded into the summer and fall that we feel like we could either defer or um move it back into the school year at a different time? And so that we'd still move ahead?
Yeah, this, this is the one that because, because of the schedule, exactly as you're describing, because of the scheduling, this is one that we would modify if necessary, what it would look like. What's the model of delivery? Because it's, the focus is on classroom-based mentoring. So if we're going to continue providing uh support over summer, uh, first for our middle school students, and this is specific to middle school students, then we would modify the model that we would use and the delivery uh of that, of that support.
Great, uh, super helpful. And then my um last question on this is, for most of the other contracts that um have student-based supports, there's um student, um, well, there's KPIs or performance targets built in that are student-related. And I, looking at the contract, I didn't, I didn't see that. And I'm wondering, is, is it because they're actually in the school? Or because we treat them differently than we would um community-based organizations? So community-based organizations, they would have a set of goals, they provide quarterly reporting, and then there's a year-end report that, and all of that is student-based. And I'm curious, either, either it's not here and I, um, so I'm just missing it, or this is something different and we treat community-based org- organizations differently?
Um, if, if it's not there, I mean, clearly, you do know Gear Up, and so you know the objectives of it. And the Campus Compact is designed to be leveraged as part of the Gear Up um in classroom mentoring support. So the outcome really should, should, should be describing how it's building the capacity of the students for college readiness, which is the, the target uh student population. And so if it's not drafted clearly, then that's, that's an area that we have to revisit when we are developing our contracts.
Yeah, and so I can follow up with um the contracts program administrator to ask why that is. Just, I know that the community-based organizations have said in the past that they felt like they were being held to a different standard um than, than others. And so uh this would just be a place where it seems like there's a student-based service that it would be the same. But I'll, I'll follow up with um Emily Courtenage after the meeting. Cause I'm not, I'm not seeing any student-based goals, but maybe it's not posted with the contract.
All right, we will now vote on um uh the item we've just been discussing, six zero eight seven. Um, we'll take a voice vote on uh this item from the business agenda. Uh, Director Lowry?
Yes.
Yeah, got it. Director DePass?
I'm sorry, Director Scott, Sam, did we get a motion in a second on that?
No, we did not. Do I have a motion to bring forward um Resolution six zero eight seven?
How, how about a, how about a motion of six zero eight seven and six zero nine zero?
Uh, we're gonna vote on them separately, so let's start with six zero eight seven since we were just discussing that.
Still moved.
Second.
Director Bailey moved, Director DePass seconds. Uh, thank you. Um, I know we've just had our discussion, sorry about that, so um we will now vote. Uh, take a voice vote.
Do we want to ask about public comment?
Do we have any public comment on this? I, I think you already heard we didn't have any public comment on the whole business agenda, I believe. At the top of the meeting. So I already have a yes from Director Lowry, Director DePass?
Yes.
Uh, Director Moore?
Yes.
Director Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Director Bailey?
Yes.
Director Scott?
Yes.
I'm yes as well, so the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero with uh student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Now, um, can I have a motion uh to bring forward Resolution six zero nine zero?
Still moved.
Okay, Director DePass moves, Director Bailey second. Um, we've just had our discussion, so we'll move to a voice vote on this item. Director Lowry?
Yes.
Director DePass?
Yes.
Director Moore?
Yes.
Director Ba- excuse me, Director Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Director Bailey?
Yes.
Director Scott?
Yes.
I am yes as well. Uh, the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero with, with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
Yes. All right, before we adjourn, um, Maxine, I would like to invite you to share anything you would like about your first week of distance learning. How'd it go?
I've had two classes so far. They've both been fine. Um, a lot of my teachers are using this week as uh just to check in with students, which for me has been really good, to just see my teachers' faces and um see all my classmates. Cause I miss everyone a lot, um, as do a lot of students and teachers miss their students, obviously. Um, so my first, my first couple days have been pretty good. I, my weight training teacher gave us uh some workouts to do, which has given me some structure, which I've enjoyed. Um, makes me a little bit more tired at the end of my day, which is good, um, since I'm doing just so much. Um, but yeah, still spending a lot of time with my cat, torturing her. She's having so much fun with it, though. Um, we had DSC meeting today, um, and we've been continuing to have DSC meetings just virtually. Um, and that's been great to see everyone and just, you know, share our knowledge across schools of what's been going on. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm doing pretty well as I committed to college, so that gave me um, that I really needed. I needed a little bit of adrenaline to get. What?
Where?
Oh, I'm gonna be going to the University of Puget Sound next year in Tacoma. And I'm super excited about that, thank you. So. So I'm just looking forward to that. Um, getting through the pandemic, let's just go to college. I'd rather not have my freshman year of college be virtual, um, but if it's gonna be like that, I'll take it. Um, but I'm just, I'm just happy I get to see my teachers right now and um my classmates and try to continue some, some normal, um, a little bit. I mean, none of this is normal, let's be real. But um, just, you know, seeing teachers is great and uh my appreciation to everyone who's doing um the, the tech stuff, because it's so complicated. And, you know, Google meets is, it's, it can be frustrating sometimes. So uh, all the teachers who are learning how to use all of this, all of my appreciation goes to them. Um, but yeah.
All right.
Well, I got, I'm in a better mood right now, so I'm good.
No.
It's fantastic.
It's great to hear how it's been.
So yeah, hope everybody's doing well in this meeting, even though I can't see everyone. But I miss seeing you all at Central Office.
We miss you too.
We miss you.
Yeah.
All right, everybody, take care. Uh, this meeting of the Board of Education is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.